Alrighty, everybody, it is six o'clock. So I will call this meeting on June the 17th to order at six o'clock PM. And want to acknowledge that we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Coast Salish people. You'll notice that there's a couple of vacant seats at the table tonight. Councilor Day is at a Changemakers Forum to celebrate the start of Indigenous Week. And Counselor Parkinson is away in a place not nearly as beautiful as the city of Colwood, drinking authentic French wine. So we shall miss him. With that, can I have an approval over the agenda? Moved by Mayor Martin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. We have one set of minutes from June the 3rd. Can I have a motion to adopt? Moved by Counselor Jensen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Now, I'd like to invite the public to comment on tonight's agenda. Just wanted to let you know that there will be additional opportunities provided at each agenda item, as well as during the final public participation at the end of the meeting. So if you do have some comments, feel free to step up to the mic, or if you want to wait until the specific agenda item, that's okay too. Seeing none, we will move right on to new business. Item five, Application DVP 19-004, 2676 Wilford Road. Development variance permit has been requested to relax the minimum allowable number of off-street parking stalls at 2676 Wilford Road. Want to invite staff to provide some comments?
Thank you very much, Your Honorable Chair. So the applicant is here in the audience tonight, as well as the traffic consultant, if there are questions. However, the traffic consultant has provided two reports to the city staff for consideration of the parking variance. And they've looked to balance out the site for the market and non-market dwelling units. And in essence, that the parking is looked to be varied from 1.5 per dwelling unit plus one for each 100-meter square of building floor area exceeding 60 meters squared by the number of dwelling units, which is 212 parking stalls, to 1.2 parking stalls per dwelling unit, which translates down to 173 parking stalls. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Brent. I neglected to advise, too, that there was some additional information that's been provided regarding this development variance permit. And copies of that additional information, which was circulated last week, has been put on our, in front of us on our workstations. With that, does the applicant want to say a few words, make a presentation?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Rachel Sansom. I'm working on behalf of the owners of 2676 Wilford Road. It's a little bit of a different application because we're not actually doing a building at this time. The parking variance request is part of the planning process that we're embarking into in partnership with the CRD and BC Housing. The reduction is primarily due to the fact that many of these units are going to be subsidized. People are not expected to own cars, or they're encouraged not to. It's also in a wonderful area of Colwood where there's lots of modes of transportation available, the bus, the Galloping Goose Trail, and all amenities nearby. Nadine King is here to discuss any technical issues you have with the reports. And she's done a wonderful job, of course, studying the area, and she's very familiar with Colwood and its needs. So if there's any questions you may have for us, we really appreciate you considering this application at this time.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll open it up to the public if you have any questions or comments on this particular application. Seeing none, I'll bring it to committee. Michael?
One question for staff. Is this property currently up for rezoning?
This property is not presently up for rezoning. It is, as the applicant has advised, this is a part of the planning exercise to right-size the parking to form part of the development permit layers that are coming forward in negotiations for future.
Okay, thank you.
Dean?
Thank you. And a question for Brent through his acting eminence. So I've read through all of this, and quite frankly, on the face of it, it makes some sense to me. But one of the questions I had is, there's, I can't quite find it here, but market unit rentals. Is that in perpetuity? Is that registered on title? Is that forever? Or is that one of these situations where 10 years from now, they're selling it and people are moving in with four cars?
That's one of the interesting things about taking forward a planning, a parking study, about the planning exercise beforehand. Right now, we have no application to directly respond to. As the applicant advised, it, part of this will form part of the makeup for how that built form will look. So if a parking cap capacity analysis was due and necessary because of the market or affordable housing component, we could certainly bring that into the part of the development permit layers of it. But as present right now, there's no consideration in this report to bring forward a covenant restricting it. The market unit portion of it is the portion that they're actually hitting the 1.2, which is in excess of the surrounding lands, but it is a reduction overall.
I was just witnessing the transfer rate.
So is this a beginning, the beginning of a discussion, or is this, I mean, are they looking for a decision of council, next council meeting?
If the 1.2 is recommended by committee to go to council, that is what they would go forward with to obtain a, or request council consideration for the official variance based on this committee's recommendation. If this committee did not feel that they could consider the 1.2 in relation to the surrounding lands, where they felt that to be too excessive, I would seek that input, and we would frankly work with the consultant and bring back some sort of alternate revision, which may include Counselor Jensen exactly covenants, as you've described, to be able to limit the effect of the built form.
It feels like there's a lot of question marks here. Could be market housing, maybe a hospital. I mean, are we putting the cart before the horse as far as the parking goes, or is there some clarification? I see Rachel stood up, perhaps she has.
Hi, thank you so much through the chair. The hospital component is a separate building, and that's actually not part of the variance. It actually would comply with the bylaws currently. Fifty percent of this is considered market housing, two-bedroom, one and two-bedroom suites. The subsidized housing, there's a lot of studio, smaller units, one-bedroom, and possibly some two-bedroom units. So there's smaller units, and a lot of the ratios that have been looked at have gone to the number of bedrooms that would be constructed. So if it could be broken down into a per-bedroom ratio, that would secure the reality of the parking going forward, no matter the use. But it is in partnership with CRD and BC Housing, and the likelihood of it turning over into 100% market housing at this point would be unusual. But again, I understand your concern, so I'd be happy to do further research if you require.
Thank you. And thank you, Brent. And thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Rob?
Thank you. I guess I'm struggling with the same thing as Counselor Jensen. So if this project failed, excuse me, through, Your Excellency, I don't know, we're coming up with all sorts of names tonight for you. If this project fails, and we approve this this evening, and then a total market project came on board and bought the property, do they get the 1.2?
Good question. Brent?
My apologies on that gap there in that response. The variance, if it's applied, would apply to the project, whatever built form comes forward. But it would apply for the consideration that has come forward, so it wouldn't apply to the hospital unit, would apply to the market derivative of the unit, and yes, they would get the 1.2 because that variance would run with the land. If we wanted to make a specificity about 1.2, it would only apply under this situation, or only with this sort of framework and markup, we would need a covenant in the form of a development agreement or a Section 219 to run with it, so that it would be applicably applied to only those units where it was considered in the first place. In the end, we don't know what the end sale of this built, of this property will be.
So I guess my concern is, we just went through this with 342 Whale, and the covenant issues that were placed on 342 Whale, and then we had to come back and do some revisions. It seems premature for us to be doing this before we actually have a project in front of us. And I guess I'm still not really understanding why we're taking this first step before we actually have a project to go, okay, it's going to be affordable housing unit, and we feel comfortable shifting it from 1.5 to 1.2. I'm more afraid that this project doesn't move forward. We lock into a market-driven property, and they don't have to live up to the requirements that any other profit-driven piece of property would need to, which would be the 1.5. And maybe alleviate that fear for me.
Through the chair, I don't know if I can alleviate that fear, except for to say that the 1.2 is applied, would apply to the market units, no matter what the scale of the building. And so if it went from 40% market to 100% market, that 1.2 would apply to all of that market as derived. And so what this actually does, that a parking variance allows, is for the developer to appropriately size their unit makeup with their parking component, so that they can create a built form that may fit in better proximity. If they can fit 1.2 ratio with 100% market-driven units, well, then that's what they'll be bound to provide. The consideration that's been brought forward by the traffic consultant, who's available tonight, isn't reflective of essentially the specificity of a building that's unknown. What it's done is it's looked at the location, it's looked at the area, it's looked at the transportation choices, and it's proposed that for this location, in this proximity, no matter what built form you see there, 1.2 is a proposed appropriate ratio for the market forces.
May I just do a quick follow-up? Why is this before us, before the project?
Through your chair, I'd actually request that the applicant.
Hi, we were, through the chair, we were asked to look at this on behalf of the potential purchaser, because it's part of their pro forma process. They need to understand what it's going to cost. And parking spaces are expensive, particularly underground. You know, they range between $30,000 and $40,000 each, probably more now. And again, in their effort to make things affordable, that's, they asked us to do this exercise. So again, it is a planning exercise. I'm confident we could come up with a legal instrument that could protect the city from a market housing taking advantage of this. I know we could work with staff and probably city solicitors and come up with some way to have this adhere to only an affordable housing mix, something that's in this actual program. And they have specified the mix of houses in a percentage of units, and we could probably have that stick to a covenant. And if this doesn't go forward, then it would not apply. If somebody came forward pure market, they would have to start fresh. So we'd be happy to work with staff to give council comfort that they wouldn't be taken advantage of here.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you. Michael?
I'd like to move the recommendation. And in the recommendation, it says, subject to the following conditions, and there are two conditions. So I'd like to add, as part of what I'm proposing, a condition C, which staff will work out with the developer to ensure that if there is any change in the amount of non-market housing in this development, that this variance would not apply.
Thank you. Staff, is clear on the motion? The intent? Amanda, you've got C? All right, so we have a mover. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Scared? Thank you.
Just a point of order. Do we have the public participation?
Oh, I'm sorry, we did miss that. My gosh. My apologies, I got wrapped up in, oh, no, I did. Yeah, I did. Thank you. No, that's it. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Kobayashi. All right, we'll move on to 5.2, report from the planning technician on Application DVP 19-009 to 62 Portsmouth. And I understand that Mayor Martin has to declare a conflict.
Which I will. I will declare a conflict of interest because this property borders my property.
Thank you. We'll just give the mayor 20 minutes to exit. Don't worry about the door. All right, development variance permit has been requested to increase the maximum size of an accessory dwelling unit to 262 Portsmouth Drive. This request also requires that a variance be issued to increase the total combined floor area for all outbuildings on the property. Turn to staff, if you've got any, anything to add, and then we'll go to the applicant.
Yes, one point of clarification there. There's no additional outbuildings to the accessory dwelling unit, but because the bylaw requires that outbuildings in total not exceed 60 square meters, it also requires a variance to meet the 90.
Excellent. Thank you. With that, I'll open it up to the applicant, if you're in the audience, if you want to say a few words.
Hello, I'm Alex Baxter. I'm the owner of 262 Portsmouth Drive. And just open questions, if you have any for me.
Thank you. At this point, I'll open it up to the public, if you have any comments on this particular application. Quiet bunch tonight. Then we'll come to committee. Michael?
I note that the structure to be built is very close to 291 I-Lot, I think. I think I've got the right number. It's the only I-Lot place that has, 289 I-Lot, and that the owners of 289 I-Lot have approved of this. So to me, the person most affected has approved it, as have a great number of the neighbors. So I would definitely support this, and I'll move the recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Scared?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 5.3, a report on the Latoria South pre-zoning, official community plan application OCP 19001. Gablecraft has submitted an application to amend the official community plan and zoning for the area of Royal Bay being described as Latoria South. Staff are recommending that prior to council consideration of the application, that a series of staff reports be provided to committee of the whole regarding a range of technical issues. These reports will include a comprehensive assessment regarding the potential impact of other development projects, such as Royal Beach and Olympic View. And at this point, we will go to the applicant to make a presentation.
Good evening. My name's Lance Flohr. I'm the president of Gablecraft Homes, and I represent the owners of the Royal Bay lands west of Machosen Road. With me tonight are Jane Farquison with Bunt Engineers, Dan Wong with Urban Systems, Ben Mycroft from Gablecraft Homes, and Matt Davis, also with Gablecraft Homes. And we'd be, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have for us tonight.
Thank you, Lance. Go to staff, if you want to provide some opening comments, please.
Thank you very much, Your Honorable Chair. The focus of this report, you'll note, is quite vague, and that's because we actually have, we think we've got a lot of work to do in behind the scenes. And what we'd like to do is request that committee consider the application at hand, look at the list that staff has proposed to be working on over the course of the summertime, so that when we are at committee and then council, that we can bring forward a positive recommend, or a recommendation that speaks forward with known information. So the intent of the report is to try and flush out whatever information that we aren't aware of, that may be at the committee, committee's focuses of concern, so that we can work on that over the summertime. And yes, part of the background for this information, traffic for one, will affect other developments, such as the Royal Beach development, which parties are also here in the audience tonight, as well as the Olympic View development, because all of those roads are all part of this infrastructure. However, that's just one of the five items that have been tabled by staff as being areas of focus, and we'd appreciate further input as required.
Great, thanks, Brent. And I noticed that this is a bit of a change in process. Instead of staff bringing forward a report, assuming that they know what some of the issues are that the public and council may have, it's to seek that input prior to staff developing that more comprehensive report, based on feedback from the public and from committee. So with that, I'm just going to go to the public for any questions or comments. I need one of those easy buttons. Okay, this is your only opportunity to speak, unless you want to wait around to the end of the meeting on this application. Mr. Hartshorn?
Thank you, Your Worship, Mr. Chair, Honorable Chair, members of council. We have working, we have been working with staff that represent Royal Beach, and I live at 2789 Guyton Way. We have two issues that were encouraged in the staff report, which has been identified in page two of the table, which is page two of your report, which indicate, as Brent has indicated, that numbers of more pieces of work need to be accomplished here, I think, we think. And in particular, the concept of what is actual density, what is being requested, what is being explained, and obviously, what that means in regards to where the zoning is in place now and where it might be going to. We think that's important. Obviously, as indicated on page six of the staff report, which talks about the recommendations, which we would agree to, the last third paragraph under Veterans Memorial Parkway. Those recommendations, we totally agree to and support. And then I want to make one last comment. So my big comment would be, we understand staff is encouraging and discussing with council in the future, the concept of a DCC program. Some members of this council, and some who aren't here, are very, very familiar with DCCs, and I am very familiar with DCCs. And so, of course, the issue of DCCs is when a municipality brings it into effect, is only when it can be used for credits and/or for collections. And of course, I don't think you have it in place, or you have a place, one in place, but I believe from your staff's report, including all the calculations of density and people contributing, obviously, we're looking at a review. And we encourage that concept. We've indicated to your staff that we'd even consider a local service area. Again, I'm very familiar with local service areas, and sometimes they're very effective when money needs to be corrected on a shorter period of time than what density through DCC program collects the money. And so my experience in these matters are, sometimes it's better to have a local service area. We would encourage either one, whatever council decides. We're encouraged that your staff are working on a DCC program. We think it's significant. Our biggest issue would be, let's make sure we understand what is being requested on all calculations. That's just not Royal Beach or Royal Bay. That would be the Latoria area. There's a number of units being proposed on Latoria, and of course, Olympic View. And, you know, fairly dramatic increase of densities for this community. And so let's make sure that what's requested and what's asked for in approval, and let's make sure all the programs, not just with TIA's sewer capacity, all the capacities that would be required here, should be part of what your staff's doing on. And I'm encouraged them, I'm encouraging them to solicit advice and direction from council. So like the last application in many ways, that we could come with a good application, that council have wrapped themselves around, staff have recommended, and that we'd all work together as a really big development. This is a big development for Colwood. It's massive when you add all the densities that we're talking about in the Latoria Walk area, Latoria area. So our encouragement is, you've asked for, your staff has asked for advice, please make sure that advice includes all the common sense discussions of where we started, where we're going, what's included, what's not, and we definitely support the DCC program. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
My name is John Upward of North Sanage, and I'm a consultant working with 594 Latoria Holdings. We've been having extensive conversations with Mr. Moner over on the road layout. We've made some significant progress, Brent's been quite helpful. I would suggest that as we go forward, that we look at that Latoria corridor as to how those lands will be developed in the future. We own or control close to four acres in there, some of which has already rezoned, and we're pushing ahead with our financing. So again, I can't say enough about Brent's help, but we need to take a, like Jim just said, we need to take a cohesive look at the entire development. Nadine has, at Watt, has worked with us on an alternate proposal, and we'll be presenting that to Brent in the near future. So again, I urge you to look at the entire package, and I refer to a very great comment in the new OCP, "The environment comes first." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for reading our OCP. That's good. Any further comment before we come back to staff? Seeing none, Brent, did you have any more to say before we come to committee? Committee?
I just have a number of questions, actually. Because I do understand the importance of this development to Colwood, or all the developments, actually, all appearing to occur at the same time, one of my concerns is that I did, I did take the opportunity to read your report, and yeah, you're right, it is very generic, and it was hard for me to comprehend it. So therefore, I took the time to read the sub-area plan for the commons and the quarry. And what I found was, well, first of all, the most important part of the report, the appendices weren't even attached to it. So I take note on that, and it was hard to read this without going into the details. So it's just a comment. Some other questions I do have on this right now is, and it's, excuse my ignorance on this right now, but there's, this is the ratio, you call the floor area ratio. And, you know, everything is based on this floor area ratio, you know, so my question to staff is, is this a normal thing to do? Because wouldn't we expect to have them propose, especially in the commons area, wouldn't we propose, have them propose a limit on the number of units, the unit counts and the heights in that area, or is this too early at this point in time? That's question number one. Okay?
Dennis?
Mr. Chair, when the, in terms of the context, when the actual rezoning application comes forward to committee, the issues around density and height will be part of the staff report. But more specifically, in regards to your question, staff's preference is that floor area ratio is used rather than the number of dwellings, because what it does is it basically prescribes the size of the box, if I can use that term, that can go on a piece of land, rather than dictating the number of dwelling units, which is a very ambiguous term and can be misused and misunderstood.
Question number two is, I noticed that the comparisons are done with the 2018 OCP, but it currently has current zoning on the property. Is it possible that we get to see what the variance is between, you know, the OCP and the current, the current zoning?
Mr. Chair, again, when the staff brings forward the more comprehensive land use staff report that will follow after we go through these five items that are in this staff report, we will be addressing issues such as the zoning. What I can tell you is that the zoning that's currently in place on this, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, is 2014 vintage? But it does, what I want to point out to committee is that the current zoning does not reflect the current OCP, and there needs to be, there will need to be an adjustment there.
Just two more questions.
Sure.
And also in the comments, you talk about the densities being reviewed by staff are based on 800,000 square feet, but then there's another number in here, 2 million square feet. I was a bit confused, yes or no?
2 million.
It's right in the sub-area plan.
Can you point out where the 2 million is?
Okay, I'll just, I'll move on to my last question, and that's basically the traffic, and it goes to the, to the comment made by, by one of the gentlemen out there, is the traffic impact assessment. And I just, you know, again, I And I just, you know, again, I'm just worried about, we get one proposal, but there's three other developments that I know of that are happening there, Olympic View, Royal Beach, and the Latoria, the Latoria development. And I just want to make sure that it, you know, that the proposed densities for all these developments are absolutely fully accounted for in this, in this, the TIA.
Brent?
Through the Chair. So we did, there's two different traffic consultants that are involved in the lands being that surround the Latoria area. Both Watt Consulting and Bunt are both involved, and both are here tonight. They were both sat down and talked about a terms of reference that would bring about the scope, and part of that terms of reference was based on the existing density as well as proposed density. Those reports have come in, in part, and some of them are being augmented with traffic impact assessments to speak about the differences between the overall. But you're correct. The corner property that Mr. Upward spoke about hasn't been overtly talked about in terms of its access route and factors to bear in it, because at present, that report and that project, although forming a portion of the density, is not at the same reality of place as these ones. And so, the traffic reports are intended to bring us to a base level of understanding, bring us forward to then the increment level as it's moving forward to facilitate the developments that would be the Beach, Olympic View, and Royal Bay South. And then, there is assumed density in those reports for the other land areas that are based on the zoning and some of the OCP thresholds, despite those projects coming forward in terms of a traffic study or assessment or review by council. But some base assumptions from the OCP and the site adaptive designing principles have been assumed for about five or six of the properties on Latoria.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
First, I'd like to welcome this new approach, and I know it won't be necessary to use it on every development. On small developments, it's probably an unnecessary step, but on something as massive and significant to the future of this community as this is, I think this is an excellent move. And I'm very glad to hear that we will get a comparison between existing zoning and new zoning, point by point, in the report. As density was brought up, I'd like to speak to that first. So the Commons area was eight hectares, or I suppose is in the, in the current plan, and will go to 12.4 hectares if this proposal is approved. And in addition, the number of units goes up, which kind of masks the fact that the density actually goes down, which is not something I think we're looking for. And I, obviously, will hear from other councillors on this, but I would like to say to staff that I would like to see the density at least as high as it was in the, in the existing plan. Unless, there is no way to support that with traffic. If it's a serious issue that puts traffic over the top, then of course, it's something we can't do. Another thing that's changed is the FSR, which in the current plan is 2.0 and is going down to 1.75. And I can't really see the point of that. Perhaps staff can explain it. An FSR of one, as it was explained to me, means that if your building is half the size of your site, you can build this two-story building, because your floor area is the same size as your lot in that case, because you've got two floors. So an FSR of 2.0 means if 50% of your site is building, then you can have a four-story building. And I cannot see any problem with four-story buildings. In fact, they're really, really good for encouraging, making bus systems work more efficiently if they're surrounded by four-story development. And as I understand it, the FSR is permissive, it's not a requirement, so if they want to build to 1.75, they can build to 1.75. But then, if they suddenly realize that, you know, there's more demand than they had anticipated, which has happened before in the pit, then they'll be back asking for a bigger FSR. I'd rather see an FSR of 4.0. The FSR in our town center is 7.0 in parts, or it was at one time, I don't know if it changed. Anyway, at minimum, I'd like to see it stay at 2.0 unless there's some complicated reason that I don't understand that staff wants to explain.
There is not a complicated reason. We needed to base the traffic reports on some known assumption going forward, and that matched what the intent was. If committee would wish to recommend that staff leave, and with the 2.0 consideration, we can certainly apply that to the traffic reports and figure out what that means to the infrastructure at hand. Parking may play into that slightly as well, but parking will be part of the rezoning consideration as this project moves forward and we bring this back to council. So we can certainly add an item to up the FSR to two, for example, if that's the wish, and then see what the implications are on that, and make sure that's part of what's reported back.
Brent, yeah, or Ben, sorry.
Hi, Ben Mycroft with Cable Craft Homes at 300 Latoria Boulevard. I wonder if we could ask Dan Wong to come up, our planner, to come up to speak to that point, because I think Counsel Baxter, or Mr. Baxter, to your point, there is some additional information you might want to hear, just to hear what the rationale was for that.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Dan Wong with Urban Systems, 2117 McNeil Avenue in Victoria or Oak Bay. I guess there was a couple of questions, and maybe through staff and through the chair, that you might want to, we can kind of have a discussion on clarification. There was a first question about total density, and the total number of units in Latoria South is actually, is increasing. And for modeling purposes, it's increasing from about 1,200 sole units to about 1,850 units. So the amount of area in Latoria South hasn't changed from previous to current. So the total units, both from single-family all the way up to multifamily and commercial, that density for Latoria South is actually increasing. So I'm not quite sure about the comment about the total density, because the total density of Latoria South is going, is increasing from the previous area, area plan. With respect to the FSR or the FAR in the Commons area, we essentially, we adjusted the Commons area, as mentioned, from 8.1 hectares to 12.4 hectares. Some of that was to accommodate a realignment of Ryder-Hegedal Way, as per the traffic consultant's recommendation. It provided better flow, better connectivity, better access with the multi-use pathways and the transit. The amount of multifamily within the Commons is increasing substantially. And then, the high street area, that is the walkable pedestrian-oriented street area, is about the same compact area as it was in the previous area structure plan. And so, from a total FSR, when you run that back out to Latoria South, you would, like that total maximum would be less than the 2.0, you know, so we put an average of 1.75. In some areas, we will be higher than 1.75, but on the total aggregate of the 12.4, if you applied a 1.75 FSR to the 12.4 hectares, you would get a substantial amount of square footage. And so, when you average that out amongst the whole site, you're at about 1.75, but there will be potential site-specific areas, which will be much greater than 1.75, closer to two, even greater than that, some which may be less than that. But until we kind of work out the zoning, that was kind of the average base that we used at this point. So if you happen to answer any other questions?
Okay, so I understand my error was in thinking the 1.75 applied to the housing area in the Commons, but it actually applies to the whole of Latoria South.
Through the Chair, in the Commons area, we apply an FAR ratio, which is a total square footage for both multifamily and commercial. Working with staff, for the Quarry, we will likely apply more of a units per acre, units per hectare, because it's more of that ground-oriented format. So you might see a combination of two in the zoning, we're continuing to work with staff on how they want to see that laid out. But as it stands out, if it's commercial multifamily, we're looking at an FAR or FSR. If it's ground-oriented to townhouse, we're looking at a units per acre, units per hectare.
Thanks, Dan.
Great. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you very much.
I haven't got any other speakers. Rob?
Sorry, may I just clarify through council, our Director of Development Services suggested a .6 on the recommendations to go to your FRS?
FAR, FSR.
Do you still want to add that? Or do you want, do you want to have that now that you've heard the answer, or?
No, I'm happy with what's in the document for now, at least.
Then I would just like to move the staff recommendation.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. On the motion, Michael.
I was gonna, don't need a second, oh, then, I'll speak to the motion. As I understand it, the motion requests, is us requesting of staff, a number of different reports, and then they would bring forward reports with those reports incorporated. So I have a number of things here I'd like to add. And one is a transit map. In the transportation section that we have in front of us, it talks about the importance of transit, but there's, the map doesn't seem to include transit. And I think we need to feature transit a little more clearly in the document, or series of documents that comes forward.
I'm happy to add that as a friendly amendment.
Well, I think, just so we know, the staff is actually taking these nuggets. We don't need a specific motion, but staff are writing them down and...
Don't we need, we need a motion.
Well, we have a motion based on the five principles.
He's adding principles.
No, 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 I'm not adding anything to the motion. I'm, they want to hear what we think.
Yeah, okay, I got it. I understand that.
Because you've put the motion, the only way I can say what I think.
So staff will take our comments, and then they'll form part of the staff report.
Okay, another important element here is the interaction between the retail commercial and the traffic report. And obviously, we want the traffic to flow as smoothly as possible. And if you imagine building that with no commercial, obviously, everybody would be making any kind of trip, commercial or work trip, or an appointment with the doctor, whatever, they would all be leaving the development and stressing the exits to the development. So we want the commercial built there to try and relieve that, and as well as a convenience for the people who live there. Now, the question is, what's the minimum amount of commercial that needs to be there now or in the future in order to make that traffic work? And is there a maximum amount where if there was too much commercial, then the inflowing traffic would start to become a problem? And neither the traffic engineers nor the economists, and I believe there was an economics report done on this at some point, neither of those people can come up with that answer on their own. That's an iterative process, where the traffic engineer says, well, I need to have so many of these trips occur locally, otherwise, you know, there's not enough room for everybody to get out. And the economics consultant will say, okay, well, then we need that this much in the way of commercial. So when we bring forward the final answer on traffic and on what is the minimum commercial, then I would like to see it signed off by both of those consultants. They have spoken to each other, they have worked together, and they are telling us that this combination works. The original Colwood Corners development with the 29-story buildings, the, I remember the traffic engineer for that came up with a solution that involved, you know, huge inflow of traffic to the site because there was going to be a large amount of commercial. But that large amount of commercial never appeared in the zoning and was never okayed by the traffic engineer anyway, or by the economics people. So we've got to get it right on this one. And added to that is the issue that Royal Beach is going to be having commercial, as well as density of residents. So I think it actually needs to be signed off by the consultants for that development as well, so that we know that it's all going to work together. So I ask that that be in that, I know staff will make a note of that, and that's dealt with that. And also, like it explained in the report, what a high street is. Because everybody has a different idea what a high street is. I lived in England for a couple of decades, so that's my idea of a high street. Now, we're in the document to say what a high street is, but the words "high street" are chosen to conjure up a certain picture in our heads, and we need to question that. So there are actually pictures in the document, and I looked through there and tried to see a picture of a high street. And there's a lovely picture of a shopping area lined with stores and people walking along, but there's no road there. So that's obviously not what's meant by a high street. So I think we need to know what's being proposed when that arrives, and not be just told it's a high street. We're also told in this document that all the neighborhoods will be distinct, and I'd like to have it explained what makes them distinct. Separated by a road is not distinct. You can be, if they're both built identically, you can be in one and be in the other and not be able to remember which one you're in. I've had that experience in a development a few miles from here, where I got into the development and could not remember how to get out because everything looked the same. And I think it would be good if, at a point where the DCCs are discussed, and I'm not sure that's going to be part of the rezoning, it'll be a separate process, I'm sure, but that we hear a comparison of DCCs versus LSA, because I think that was a good point brought up by the developer of Royal Beach, that there's two different ways of doing it, and one may be better than the other. And so I think we need a discussion comparing those. And I think that's probably all you want me to say for now.
That was very good, and I suspect that's exactly what staff are looking for, so I appreciate that, Michael, thank you. Dean?
It's been so long, I forgot what I wanted to say, but... Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am heartened by the willingness, it appears, of the developers to work together in areas, whether it be sewers or road infrastructure, trails, transit, what have you. So, I mean, my vision is that all these developers are sitting in the same room, sharing ideas, coming up with one master plan that suits the entire community, and hopefully, that's staff's vision as well, because I think that if we put the cart before the horse, you know, we could be left trying to back clean up down the road when someone comes to the table a little bit late, so is this the vision?
Through your honorable chair, yes, that's the vision.
We tried it first off with the traffic consultants, bringing forward the points of intersect, and ultimately, if we compare the Royal Beach lands to the Royal Bay lands, I mean, they are separated by their chosen roadway, but there does have to be that synergy. There's also that commercial synergy as well, talking about the economic drivers for the site. That partnership is working, in part, somewhat successfully, and it will, it will continue to evolve just because they're neighbors and they have to, they have to correlate. When we bring back the traffic report, it'll talk about the synchronicity between the site and how we're looking to deal with that traffic. Development cost charge program has been spoken... Development cost charge program, as been spoken to today, will as well involve all of the development community and all the lands of Colwood, and that synergy we hope to continue to build. However, there is a differences of ownership groups, and that synergy can only be, be bridged so far.
Thank you. Don't have any speakers, so I will call the question on the motion. All those in favor? Posed? Scared? Now, we'll go on to item number six, final public participation. Anyone wish to make any final comments or have any questions? Seeing none, next meeting is scheduled, same place, same time, July the 2nd. So, can I have a motion to adjourn? Move my dead? All those in favor? Posed?